Thank you and welcome. I'd like to call to order the February fourteenth, I almost forgot the date, what a sad date to forget. The February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mary, can you please do the roll call?
Absolutely.
Palmer?
Here.
Hool?
Here.
Petway?
Madiras?
Here.
Granlin, here. Mueller?
Here.
Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next, moving on, we have our agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence, starting with our approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? So moved. Mary and a second?
Second.
Second by Julie, any discussion? All right, hearing none, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next, we have our announcements. Excuse me. I'm either looking at the wrong meeting or announcements are wrong on there. Let's see, our announcements, February twentieth, Monday, there is no school. February twenty-first, at five P M. is our school board work session, which is actually our retreat here in the community room. February twenty-eighth, at seven P M. is the regular school board meeting. Adding in the notes, on March seventh, at six P M. here in the community room, is our joint school board and city council meeting. And March fourteenth, at seven P M. is our regular school board meeting here in the community room. Moving on.
Chair Mueller?
Yes.
Can I just add that, did we, did we talk about the early release day this Friday? Was that on there?
It's on the calendar.
It is.
It's on the calendar, yes.
On the calendar, yes. Today is an early release day, or excuse me today.
Friday.
Friday is an early release day. Thank you. Next, we have correspondence. Superintendent Stenbik, is there any correspondence?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
Next, we have communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. We do have one person who has asked to, or is looking to come in front of the board. And our consent agenda includes our personnel report, the school board minutes from January third organizational meeting, January tenth and twenty-fourth regular school board meetings, and the January seventeenth work session, the treasurer's reports from June through November two thousand and twenty-two, and the policy second reading for the policies that appeared at the January twenty-fourth meeting for the first reading, which was four-ten, family and medical leave policy, four-fifteen mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults, four-seventeen chemical use abuse, five-oh-four student dress and appearance, five-fifteen protection and privacy of pupil records, five-twenty-four technology and internet acceptable use and safety policy, seven-oh-eight transportation of non-public school students. And so those are in the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Point of order?
Yep.
We need to do an update on the, the, the community member speaking to the board.
Oh, I apologize. Yep, prior to the consent agenda, we had a community member speaking to us about class sizes. Thank you. Next, we have our discussion reports and information items, starting with our reports from members of the board, members reporting out on activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting. And we will start with Jessica.
Great. So since the last board meeting, I attended the band concert at Columbia Academy that the elementary students also participated in. So that was really cool to see the elementary students having their first concert and the middle schoolers being able to kind of show them where they could go. So that was neat. I also attended the city's Snow Blast event and saw a lot of members of the community there, was able to talk to folks. I attended the Highland P T O meeting last week. And then I also had a pre-meeting with the facilitator for our board retreat next week.
Thank you, Jessica. Mary?
Okay, lots of things. I was also at Snow Blast, which was fantastic, although cold. I attended a Valley View P T O meeting, and we were discussing some carnival planning updates, which is very exciting, April twenty-first, it's a Friday. I attended the policy subcommittee right before this. And then lots of connecting with families, students, and staff in our district. I had a couple text messages and some phone calls with Superintendent Stenbik and Directors Petway and Madiras. I watched Superintendent Stenbik speak at the State House, which was in support of our E L. students and families, and it was an amazing, wonderful talk. And, you know, I would just like to take a second to say thank you so much for advocating for our, for our community. It was, it was really phenomenally done.
Thank you.
And then lots of volunteering at Columbia Academy and supporting the staff and students there. I'm positive I forgot something, so.
Like the Subcommittee on Policy?
I did, I had it.
Oh, sorry.
I said, no, that's okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Julie?
The last two weeks, I was in training with M S B A on being a treasurer. And those were a couple of long nights, but I want to shout out to the M S B A because I think they're amazing trainers and just really helpful. And so that's kind of what I've done the last couple of weeks.
Great.
And I scheduled a time to see Director Henneken's this week for Friday to kind of go over some of those things that we talked about in the classes, so.
Perfect. And you were also at the Subcommittee on Policy prior to this.
Yes, I attended the policy.
Thank you. Laura?
Okay, I had a few things going on. Actually, just prior to this meeting, I attended the chair meeting. And previous to that, I attended the nine-sixteen board meeting at the beginning of this month. They were celebrating Career and Tech Month, which was, which was kind of exciting because our students do have the opportunity to be able to get actual degrees from, from Century College. That's part, that's, that our students can access those, which is fantastic, as well as some grow your own initiatives. There is a proposal in the works for, for nine-sixteen to actually be able to, be able to provide the licensure for, alternative licensure for, for special ed. They will actually be able to accredit teachers for being able to do that, which is fantastic because, you know, if you can't find them, you make them. And there are already, you know, people that are within the district and we, and of course, our, our teachers as well can also participate in these things as well, which is fantastic. And at Career and Tech, they actually did get authorization to get a new type of like virtual training for the, the police program over there. And it is a virtual reality with the, it focuses on de-escalation and how to be able to handle things to be able to de-escalate the, you know, the problems, you know. And, and we got a lot of great feedback that a lot of police departments in the area are trying to take this approach, you know, because they know how to be more, you know, out there. Now, it's just a matter of being able to work with people and be able to de-escalate, you know, make everything safer for everybody. Then I attended the nine-sixteen foundation meeting as well. And the, the annual gala event is coming up on March third. March third, it's a Thursday at six P M. over at, I will get that information for you. But you can actually purchase tickets at nine-sixteenfoundation.org. They'll have a silent auction in different, different types of, of, different types of things that they're looking at fund, there's fund to need, and so on. So there's, there's some really incredibly great things that, that this particular foundation does for the, the students with the, the most needs. You know, it is just that little extra bit of support. And I highly recommend to, to see what, what kind of great things that are there being offered for our students. So it's, it's great. I mean, it's, it's like, I guess they're like the boosters for the special ed district.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And that, I guess that covers it.
Perfect, thanks. Hi, no, you're fine. We are just doing our board reports. So I am the last one to go now. And if you, after I go, if you want to get some, you can give yours. Okay. So for me, I had a conversation, the Chair of the Hastings School District had reached out to me to talk about our upcoming board retreat. So I had a good conversation with her. Superintendent Stenbik and I toured our Columbia Heights Mayor through Valley View and Columbia Academy. She wanted to get out into the schools and have some tours. And we had a great time meeting with the students and, and the staff out there. And Superintendent Stenbik was a good host, as well as Principal Coleman over at Valley View and Principal Burkus. So it was fantastic time. And we've got a couple more tours coming up in the near future. Also had a conversation with our facilitators for the upcoming board retreat, had the Subcommittee on Policy, and then the chair meeting just prior to this. Michelle, would you like to give us your report on the last couple weeks?
Can you guys hear me?
Okay.
So, at least I did that ahead of time. So I, I did have my meeting with Superintendent Stenbik a little bit ago. So that was awesome. And I got to go to Snow Blast, which was very fun. Got to break out the ice skates from the little one. So she had a great time with that. Lots of other activities there, which was a lot of fun. So I went sledding at North Park. They had a great event there. And we did last, well, this past Monday, no, that wasn't yesterday, that was last week. We did, no, it was yesterday. Sorry, I'm losing my mind a little bit. So last week, though, the end of last week, we did breakfast at North Park with, with my daughter for the National African American Parent Involvement Day, which was very fun. And I got to speak with the parents about possibly joining our affinity group at the school. So that was a great opportunity to reach out to the parents then. So that worked out great. And then I had my interview with, I'm going to forget the organization, the, help me out, guys.
Was that with Paula?
Yeah, was that part?
Yes, thank you so much. So I had an interview with her yesterday. So that was great. It was, it was a great conversation and getting to know her. It was, it was awesome. Kind of went over a little bit. So that means it was good. Yeah, so it was, it was pretty much it.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Superintendent Stenbik, do you have a report for us?
I sure do. Since our last board meeting, as mentioned, I testified at the Capitol in favor of funding for English learner programs. I met with our American Indian Parent Committee, facilitated the tour of Valley View and Columbia Academy with the mayor and Chair Mueller, participated in the strategic planning with Metro X U Executive Committee, which was really an interesting and very long process. But, you know, it gives us a good opportunity as our Columbia Heights Public School strategic roadmap is, our strategic plan is expiring here, coming up pretty soon. I had communications with Chair Mueller, Member Petway, Member Hool, and Member Granlin. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, on our informational items is our Strategic Direction D, securing and effectively managing our resources, human, financial, and physical, with Director Hennekenz.
Thank you, Chair Mueller. Excuse me, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik. I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, let's see. All right. So Strategic Direction D, our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, aligning with our Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education Equity Statement. This is informational, no governance on this question, or on this presentation. And again, our strategic roadmap, built for two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-four. So we're getting on the end of that. And again, that Strategic Direction D, securing and effectively managing our resources, human resources, financial and physical, is what I'm covering this evening. And then this, the operational plan metrics, the process did come through. Again, that's strategic planning input from community, staff, students, and parents. And we've determined the areas of focus and for continuous improvement and created those new metrics. And that baseline year was nineteen-twenty. So the first part is a little dated because they were, they're the bond projects from two thousand and nineteen. So that metric hasn't changed since then. So I still include it on here, though, because it's part of this, this overall area. We're at vision for both completed on time and completed within budget. And then the next section, starting with fund balance. So on the right-hand side, you'll see the gray check mark. Hopefully that shows up gray for you. That's last year. This year, we're sitting at that four to five percent range. So we're still in the progressing, but not in vision. Also with the annual variation from established budgets, that we moved into that progressing from the three to six percent, we're between that three and four percent range for this past year for twenty, for twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-two. And, you know, we discussed this during the audit timeframe when we presented to the board from last year's F Y twenty-two budget and the core areas that considerably went over budget and why we see that annual variation, special education, transportation, being those two key areas. Budget alignment, you see that that dropped as well into progressing. It's just below the sixty-four percent now, or right around sixty-four percent if you average, or if you round it. Within this category, it's no surprise that it dropped below that sixty-five percent for me, just because, you know, the significant costs in transportation from the year before, it increased that support cost area. And so the percentages from the instructional went down as we had that drastic increase in the support costs. So I anticipate in some, to some level for F Y twenty-three, that will adjust a little bit because our transportation cost for this year right now, though projecting to be higher than what we would have anticipated based on historic, is still looking to be less than it was the previous year because we are doing a very good job of, of moving from the larger quantity of vans that we had the previous year to more yellow buses. Then the quality of facilities and grounds from the climate survey. So we have a community survey from last year. And we have traditionally scored very high in this. And we continue to score very high in this category in vision. And then in the operating levy comparison, this has been a longstanding conversation in, in recent last couple of years here, I should say longstanding, but it really in the last couple of years, we've had a lot of conversation about where we're at with our levy in comparison to other similar metro districts. And so we'll talk more about that actually in the next presentation as well. But we are in the lowest quartile of similar districts. And then community satisfaction, which is for financial decisions, continues to be in the vision category. And so for this, there's no surprise that there's a little bit of dip in that those three areas that we did drop. So our score still remains in the vision category of level five, just dropping from four-point-six to four-point-four.
Great.
That is it.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Director Hennekenz?
I have a couple of questions. Director Hennekenz, could you go back to the second to last slide? The, it's like the fiscal responsibility metrics? Yes, so, sorry, I'm having trouble seeing across from me here. So, so I, the D two-point-four, the quality of facilities and grounds, the climate survey, is that the, the, are those questions included in the overall climate survey that's given to families? Or is that a separate instrument?
So the answer to that is yes and no. So traditionally, in our larger climate survey that we've done, those questions were included in that. We made some changes with our climate survey. The, this data that I currently have is from our community survey that went out last spring. So it's, it's, it's not actually the climate, the overall climate survey, it's from the community survey because that was the most recent data we had. And we did ask questions within that. So it's that, and also the financial one comes from that community survey that we did last spring.
Okay, so the D two-point-four and then D two-point-six, the community satisfaction, are coming from the same survey?
Yes, they're coming from the community survey that went last spring.
Okay, thank you. And then when you talked about scoring very high, I see that there, I just want to clarify, though, that that's the percentage, the scoring high is based on the percentage of people surveyed?
It's, it's just like any other survey. So, you know, it, it's not, you're not polling everybody in, in the community or polling statistically significant quantity of people within the community. And, and so, you know, based on that polling, you know, we're saying that, I'm trying to look and see eighty, let's see, the actual number here. Ninety-six percent feel average or above.
Sure, okay.
And so, so that's, that's what we're, we're pulling our data from. So it's, it's, it's not that we're taking a percentage of the people that, we are taking percentage of the people that answer, but it's statistically significant poll for the entire community.
Okay, thank you. And so getting to vision, we're looking at the percentage surveyed as the metric?
No, we're, yeah, we're looking at the percentage surveyed and what they said. Who said, that said that, you know, sixty-five, in this, in this, to create vision, sixty-five percent or more of the people surveyed have a positive, above-average feeling about how, what the quality of the facilities and grounds are in our school district.
Excellent. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Sorry it took me a second to get there with you, but.
Thank you for asking that question, Jessica, because I also had a.
I was fumbling along there, so.
No, I.
Thank you.
I had a similar question, so thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions? Great, thank you for the information, Director Hennekenz.
Thank you.
Next, we will be presented with the financial update, also with Director Hennekenz.
Okay. So in this presentation, I thank you Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbik. In this presentation, we'll talk about the financial update forecast for two thousand and three, two thousand and four. Similar presentations every year. And we do these presentations throughout the school community as well, in the varying buildings and for the varying departments. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, aligning with Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education Equity Statement. So I want to start just kind of briefly having a conversation about our funding. And it is highly regulated by the state. The state is setting our formulas, which determine our revenue. They set tax policy. They set the maximize authorized property tax that we can go up to the voters for. And they authorize the school board to submit referendums for operating and capital needs as well to the voters for approval. So, you know, we're highly regulated by the state of Minnesota. And our funding, and I, and I think a lot of people have a hard time understanding this. It comes in many different, let's say, buckets. And I, I say funds. And it just doesn't, the district doesn't just receive all of this revenue, and then it comes into one checking account. And then we just get to, you know, spend it how we deem, we feel that we need to spend it for our kids. There are buckets that have less strings attached to them. But in general, all of our funding comes with reporting and strings attached to that and how we can spend that, those funds. We have our main fund, which is the general fund that we operate out of. But even within that general fund, there's a lot of different categories of funding that we have to work through and comply with and report on. Our community service fund, Fund Two, Fund Four, food service fund, too. So we have a lot of different funds that we work with. And the, and those funds or those buckets typically don't cross over. So food service isn't typically crossing into general fund and vice versa, though there are some obvious exceptions, persons have a discussion. There are exceptions in some, in some scenarios. So within those buckets, particularly, we talk about general fund, which is the largest bucket that we have. It's aid and levy coming in. Most of it is state aid. And there's a slide coming up to kind of show you that breakdown. And then a smaller portion of that is levy. So levy from the local taxpayers. So really, a majority of our funding, again, I'll show you a slide visually to show, or do a slide visually to show this, comes from state aid, not from the local taxpayers directly. And we still have this component of funding for the schools, which is that CARES Act federal funding. And we've been spending that over the last couple of years. And we do anticipate to spend the majority of, if not all of that funding this year. And not, and though we do have the ability on some of that funding to carry that into the next fiscal year, and can be spent through September two thousand and twenty-four. So this is that general revenue, sources of revenue slide that I was talking about. And I think one of the big stories for our school district is that gray bar in the middle, or the gray set of bars in the middle, which is our state aid. Whoops, sorry. And you can see that in two thousand and nineteen, we had just over forty million in state aid. In two thousand and twenty, there was forty-one million. And then we dropped back down to almost that forty million range. And then it creeped up another, you know, a couple hundred thousand in twenty-two, but still in that forty million range. And that flat state enrollment, our stat, flat state funding is kind of a, a test of where our enrollments, we saw a decrease in enrollment with the pandemic. And we saw, so we saw a flat state aid funding. But yet, you know, we continue to have, you know, the costs and also increasing costs with inflation and the additional costs that COVID created. And then you can see that blue bar on the top, which are, you can see that that's increased over the last few years. And that increase is really driven on those COVID dollars. So, you know, we're spending out those COVID dollars last year. We spent a significant portion of them. And so that's what increases that blue bar are really those COVID dollars. And then the local taxes down in the bottom, again, traditionally staying fairly flat as we, you know, we haven't really made any, any changes to that since two thousand and fourteen, when we passed the capital projects levy because our operating levy has been flat since two thousand and five. when we passed the capital projects levy, because, uh, our operating levy has been flat, um, since 2005. And this is just expenses by area and we did see that our, you know, that percent, and that was in strategic direction D. People support services percentages increased. And then that instructional related percentage decreased. And then, and that was just by those over expenses and mainly in transportation and special education for contracted services. And then our board policy, we know this, the, the Board of Education shall strive to maintain a fund balance between six and 12%. That's our policy. We are currently below that. And, uh, you know, we, so that's something that we are going to continue to work on. And we hope that, um, the state hears us, um, when we talk to them and understands that, you know, our, our EL cross subsidy, our special education cross subsidy, um, which last year was $6.2 million is, um, really ticking from the general fund and, and really hurting our overall, uh, funding for our district. And this is just the fund balance trend that we've seen. And again, you know, pandemic hit, enrollment's going down, um, and revenues are flat. Expenses, um, continue to increase with inflation and transportation and, and, um, you see that fund balance going down. So enrollment, um, enrollment trend, um, you can see, um, that downward trend eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, and 2021. And, you know, even though that there was areas of additional revenue coming in or the state were giving us increases on the formula with less students, we were just maintaining flat revenue. And, um, you know, thankfully, we've worked really hard and we've seen an influx of, of students as of recent. And we see that trend going the other way. And this is overall enrollment in our schools. So you can see right now we're sitting at, um, about thirty-two, thirty-one in 22, 23. This is a little bit more telling story for our enrollment trend, which is our elementary enrollment. So you can see the drastic decrease in our elementary enrollment. We had a lot of large class sizes and then we've, we've been seeing a lot of small class sizes coming in. So those large classes that are at our secondary, and as those large class sizes go out in our secondary, we do not have the large class sizes that are elementary to fill them. And so we will see a decrease in enrollment. And we see, we see a little bit of a bump in enrollment this year so far at our elementary level. But it is only, you know, twenty-three students more than last year. So it, we have seen a couple, uh, years in a row now of kindergarten classes that are, are okay. So they're, they're not as low as they were. But we still need to see that trend, uh, increase. And we anticipated a decrease just in live births. So, um, it's, it's, there is a lot of that has to do with live birth. And then our, our educational formula that we've seen over time. You can see back in the, in the teens there, 2013, 14, 15, you saw, you know, 1% increase, 1.5% increase, 1.9% increase. I can tell you that inflation did not match that increase. And you can see that we've been receiving 2% for a while now and then in '22, we got a 2.45%. But again, not keeping track with inflation and there's a lot of conversation about what that percentage is going to be. And the longer time goes on, um, the more things that are introduced that have dollars associated with them. So we'll see what happens. And, you know, there's, there's high confidence. There's also a lot of things that, that want, that they want to fund. So this is that gap that we talked about. So this goes back to, chart goes back to 2003. And if, if funding would have kept up with inflation, we would be at about $8,126 per student, per student. But we're actually at $6,863 per student. So it's a twelve-hundred-and-sixty-three, uh, uh, dollar gap. And that, that dollar gap, um, equates to about sixty-one teachers and staff for our school district. So, um, you know, I, I would think that any teacher you talk to or any support staff person you talk to, they feel like they're, they're thin and they, and they need more support, they need more staff. And in our school district, you know, eleven, twelve, thirteen more staff members per building and, and what the potential, um, that we could do to support our students. And that's all in the fact that the state is, you know, sitting on the largest surplus ever. It's over seventeen billion and growing. So our budget next steps, the school board is, has already directed us to look for efficiencies. We've already approved that, district administration. We're working on our budget and forecasting. We're doing financial presentations and, and, and we're presenting to, to the legislature. So, um, we're doing the things that we need to and we need to continue to get the word out and talk to our, our legisla, our reps. And, um, you know, this, the, right now, those school forms are, are important. And in this conversation of free lunch, I just want to make sure that, you know, the conversation never is left with that. We get 20% of our funding in, um, for compensatory aid from those educational benefits form. And, uh, that's over $2 million for us. That if, if we have a hard time collecting forms or the forms no longer exist, that, that revenue is, I don't know where we're going to get it from. So, you know, if we're getting increases in other areas, you know, they're going to be washed out by that decrease. So there has to be a plan for that. And we need to continue to talk about the good things that are happening here and, and spread the word. So cross subsidy, I, I've mentioned this a couple of times, I think, in this presentation, is $6.2 million. You know, we saw in 2018, you know, 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, it was just on a gradual increase. So each year as we spend more money in special education, our cross subsidy continues to grow in special education. And then we saw a, a decrease and that decrease was, um, really because there was a little bit of additional funding they put towards the cross subsidy. And we saw the pandemic. So we saw costs in certain areas go down. Particularly in '21, we saw costs go down in transportation for special education because we didn't have vans, um, uh, driving students to, um, varying places to receive services or within our buildings. And so now that all returned in '22 and then some. So we saw, we're seeing a cross subsidy of 6.2 million right now. This will, number will adjust as, um, our enrollment numbers, um, close out for the year and, um, the state makes some adjustments. So I predicted to change a little bit, but, uh, not too much from the $6.2 million mark. And then this levy conversation, again, the lowest quartile, we presented, I presented this in strategic direction D. We're at $308.93 or rounded to 309. And these are, uh, similar sized districts near the metro. And you can see at the top, um, Orno at, whoops, at, uh, 2085. And again, that current per pupil levy cap in Minnesota, which the legislature sets is $2,110.97. Obviously, we're not even close to that. But again, looking at other districts and then looking at districts around us. Again, we sit in that lowest quartile, um, at 308.93. For the, at 577, San Anthony at 930 and so on. So in Mount U sitting at 2012 per student. So it's quite a disparity in the amount of funding that these, uh, school districts are receiving, um, additionally from an operating levy. So in summary, I want to kind of go through this pretty quickly here. You know, we, we, state has been giving us 2%. We saw that, but typically our increases are more than that with roll-up costs for staff and, and, and just for inflationary additional other costs. So we really are being, we really have been cutting every year. And the funding shortfall causes fund balance problems. And we just don't have the wiggle room to absorb, uh, when needs come. If additional students come with high needs, if transportation changes because of bus driver shortages, um, and costs go up, we just don't have the wiggle room to support that. So it, the, the fund balance just continues to go down. We could, will continue to present, um, you know, where we're at financially and continue to work with the district finance committee and, and get this information out. But we do believe we're doing our very best to stretch our dollar to best serve our students. If the funding formula is not increased and tied to inflation, we're going to continue to see this problem in cutting, uh, programs, having problems with class sizes, relying on borrowing for interest with interest, just to manage the functions of the district. Sorry, the federal COVID, um, aid, um, was, um, highly needed funding, but it is one-time funding. And that cliff is coming for us. Special education cross subsidy, again, um, that's over six million. English, uh, learner cross subsidy has been around $800,000 for us every year. Last year it increased to over $900,000. And I would venture that number's going to continue to increase for us as well. Class sizes, um, you know, we've heard, um, teachers come and talk about this and, and the need for additional EL support and funding to support them. Transportation, um, the rising costs in our audit last year, we could see that it was over a million dollars increase for us. Very difficult still to find drivers, though it's a little bit better than it was. And, you know, we, it's a challenge for us. If we see higher numbers of special education and homeless and foster care, we're going to see higher costs in transportation. And we do, we do continue to see, um, higher homeless numbers and, and special education numbers. Local funds from tax base, um, this is again, just back to that levy conversation. It's at 309, it's been at 309 since 2005. The average in the metro area is over a thousand. So we're not even close to the average, um, for the metro schools and what they're receiving to support their kids. We are incredibly thankful for the, the 2014 supported capital project levy, which really, uh, prepared us, um, for, uh, the events that happened, uh, leading into the pandemic. And we were in a good position, uh, to support our students going forward. And I think it's critical that we continue to do those things to be prepared and to support our students. Mental health, um, we have increased needs, we have increased mental health, um, staffing. And, um, and this is a great stat from the, this, uh, Minnesota Student Survey, I think has been talked about before. Ninety-four percent of our students report feeling that their teachers care about them. And we do, in this district, care highly for our students and, and really just need tho, those dollars to support them better. And we are using that, um, COVID funding. And that is, you know, sorry, uh, that is one-time funding and that cliff is coming. So there are needs that we are, we are, um, going to be looking for funding to support in mental health. And then again, compensatory aid. And this year alone, we received $1 million less in compensatory aid. So this is the very, um, high need conversation for a district like ours where we receive, uh, compensatory, additional compensatory aid to, to serve our students and, and what, you know, again, those educational benefits forms really matter to us. So what they do in decision-making for compensatory aid in terms of these, uh, forms with serving kids free meals, uh, in Minnesota is an important conversation to make sure that something doesn't get lost.
Thank you, Director Hennigan. Questions?
I have one. So the, is it still called the lunch form? I know that's pretty misleading for the parents. Even when we clarify, it's still, like, it doesn't matter. They see lunch form and it's automatically like, either they know they're not going to qualify, so they don't fill it out. I'm not sure who, um, names the forms or how hard it is to change that name. But I'm pretty sure if they change that, that might be a simple fix to getting parents to fill that out even.
Technically, it's called the educational benefits form and everyone refers to it as the lunch form. Yes, and that's, it comes from the state.
Okay.
And maybe actually the federal USDA, Brian.
Yeah.
I think it's federal.
I mean, it's, it's, it's conformed to each state, but, um, I mean, it's, the, the food service program is federal. So it is basis off of USDA federal.
Gotcha.
Comment on that. I, I have noticed as a parent that in the last probably five years or so, the district has increased their messaging around that form. And I think that that has been helpful so that, um, families know, um, that they're, you know, contributing to, um, the district getting that support. Whether or not they qualify for free or reduced lunch, that just completing that form is helpful. So, um, I, I just wanted to put that out there because I've, I've appreciated that change.
Thank you. Other questions?
Mary. Not necessarily a question so much as just a comment. I think prior to the pandemic and certainly during and now after, it's incredibly clear how much our staff truly cares about our kids. And they have, we continue to magically do such an amazing job with these kids with so little. However, it's also clear that everybody is getting really burnt out. And we can't continue to do these amazing things without support from, um, our legislators, both here in the state and at, you know, at the federal level. And so we, I think those of us sitting up here saying these things to our legislators is important. However, it can't just be us, it has to be community also driving this. And I'm grateful for a presentation like this that so clearly outlines where our funding is coming up short and how we compare to other districts. Because we are doing an amazing job compared to other districts. But holy cow, our kids could soar if we had sixty-one more teachers. If we haven't had, you know, if, if we had more EL support and, and more, you know, smaller class sizes and all of these things that we know has amazing outcomes for students. But we are limited by what the state and federal governments have, like, imposed and the promises that they've never kept. And I think you said it best at a last meeting, Chair Mueller, where you said, "There is no surplus when we have unfunded mandates for education." And I think anybody who's listening at home, please, please, please call your people. Even if you think that they already agree with you, call them and let them know. Because we can't do this without you and our students deserve it.
Thank you, Mary. Other questions?
I was going to say something, but I don't want to end on a different note. I'm sorry. No, that was beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Hennigan.
Thank you.
Um, next Superintendent Stenbeck for School Board Recognition Month.
Yes, this month we are recognizing and honoring Columbia Heights Public Schools ISD number thirteen school board. Our school board members were elected to the commu, by the community or appointed to this voluntary position. School board members spend countless hours in training, right, everybody? To learn about the complex role that they serve. And they dedicate numerous hours to preparing for meetings in order to make decisions that are crucial to the functioning of our schools. Some of the areas that school board members impact include policy, facilities, curriculum, compliance with state and federal law, not to mention oversight of multimillion-dollar budgets. On behalf of Columbia Heights Public Schools, I want to thank each and every one of you for fulfilling this important civic duty and the care you demonstrate for the well-being of our learners. And with that, I have some certificates that we'll hand out if we can get a certificate group photo. But before, before I want to do that, I want to recognize, we'll start with what we'll call our newbies. We have, uh, member Julie Hool, who started in this January of 2023, welcome. And our other newbie, Jessica Madeiras, who also started January 2023, welcome. And member Petway, who also started in January 2023, welcome to you. And then moving, moving up in, up in the, uh, tenure on school board, we have member Mary Granland, two years completed. And then moving, moving up in, up in the tenure on school board, we have Member Mary Granlin, two years completed.
I know.
Way to go. We have Chair Lorian Mueller, six years completed. And our most veteran on the board is Member Vice Chair Laura Palmer, with twelve years completed. So round of applause for all of you. And we'll come over and I'll hand out your certificates and take a quick photo. All right.
Thank you also for the cupcakes.
This is a thing of beauty.
Yes.
It's a thing of beauty.
Salted caramel.
Excellent, and I do thank, thank you Superintendent Stenfik and Dawn for the recognition. And I think for those of you who are listening, it's, you know, I welcome the new board members and thank you specifically for joining us, because this is, it's, it's a challenge. It's, it's not easy. There's a lot of meetings and a lot of decisions and a lot of community members and a lot of responsibility. And I thank all of you, not just starting members, but all of you for serving, because we're better because of our board. So, thank you.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I really, I really appreciate the enthusiasm as well, understanding that this is a working board and that we do, that, we, we do what needs to be done to be educate ourselves, to make sure that we are making the best decisions. And I really, I'm really so excited to, to see three new board members on their new journey, you know, and seeing what you can bring to the board and, and help us to really, really grow as a district.
Thank you, Laura. Great. With that funness, we will move on to our action items. And we have Jake Henderson for our Minnesota State High School League Foundation, Form B two, application resolution.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenfik, thank you all for having me, and congratulations. We all appreciate the work that you, you all do and the time that you all put in. So congrats on receiving that recognition. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And the core values that we'll briefly focus on tonight are community, excellence, and collaboration. So tonight, I'm back here seeking approval. It is an action item for a resolution for the Form B Minnesota State High School League grant. As I presented on January twenty-fourth at that meeting, we would like to use this grant money for staff and student leadership opportunities and leadership resources. It is my recommendation that we pass the resolution tonight, so that we can apply for and hopefully receive some of those grant funds.
Great, thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you.
Since this is a resolution, I will read the resolution and then ask for a motion a second to move this forward. This is the resolution of School Board Governing Board supporting the Form B two application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the Governing Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas the MSHSL Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools to provide seminars, training, opportunities, or support for specific school functions for students, faculty members, and officials, and others who are involved in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Governing Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools supports the school's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form B two grant to offset costs in three specific areas, including leadership initiatives, safety, and transportation that reduces barriers to participation. I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Julie, and a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica. Since this is a resolution, Mary, will you call the roll, please? Absolutely. Palmer?
Yes. Yes.
Hul?
Yes.
Petway?
Yes.
Maderas?
Aye.
Granlin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Thank you, resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you all for your time.
Next, we'll move on to board topics. Does anybody have any board topics? I have two. Just to reiterate that the plan for March seventh, at six PM, the joint meeting with the city council here in the community room, that's not like a regular scheduled meeting day. So make sure you have that on your calendar. And then next week, our board retreat at five PM. So make sure you're here for that, and your dinner will be provided, so stay tuned on that. Any other board topics?
I don't know if it's appropriate here or not, but just looking at the, the presentations from Director Henneken's today, if we could, if we could get a copy of those. I know the one had been provided to us previously, but I don't know if it had been changed at all, so.
Yeah.
That'd be helpful.
Thank you, yes, that's totally appropriate.
It's not really a board topic, because you all just wait a sec after we get out, because I have something for you. I just have to go grab it from the hall, but it didn't travel well, so I have to put it back together.
Sure. Thank you. Thanks, Michelle. Any other other? That was for you, Mary, Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. This is how Chair Mueller shows her love.
All right. We will adjourn at eight oh seven.